Nutrition distribution programs will come to order. I do want to welcome everyone. Once again, good morning and welcome to today's Nutrition Subcommittee Hearing on Food Distribution Programs. This hearing continues the committee's series where each subcommittee is undertaking a comprehensive review of the current Farm Bill as we move to draft the next. And I want to thank you to everyone for taking the time to be here, particularly our witnesses, for their participation and their respective insights. USDA's Food Distribution Programs, the Emergency Food Assistance Program, TFAB, the Commodity Supplemental Food Program, and the Food Distribution Program on Indian Reservations Strengthen the Nutrition Safety Net through the Distribution of USDA Foods and Other Nutrition Assistance to Children, Low-Income Families, Emergency Feeding Programs, Indian Tribal Organizations, and the Elderly. These programs provide support to populations in need and help decrease food insecurity in our low-income communities. It's important to have a general understanding of these three programs, how they differ from one another, how they interact, and how they, along with our nation's largest anti-hunger program, SNAP, Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, work together to meet the nutrition needs of our most vulnerable citizens. The panel we will hear from this morning will offer insight based on their operational and policy experience. These on-the-ground perspectives are critical and will be critical as we look forward towards the Farm Bill reauthorization with a focus on improving what works and reducing administrative burden so that the program benefits reach those most in need in the most effective and efficient manner possible. The food distribution programs are each designed to meet the needs of a particular population. TFAB helps to supplement the diets of low-income Americans by providing them with emergency food assistance at no cost. CSFP is targeted at improving the nutrition of low-income elderly people at least 60 years of age by supplementing their diets with food packages. In both programs, USDA purchases the food and ships it to state agency and provides support for administrative costs. TFAB and CSFP state agencies work closely with local agency partners to distribute the USDA foods in communities. FDPIR provides USDA foods to income-eligible households living on Indian reservations and to American Indian households residing in approved areas near reservations or in Oklahoma. Many households participate in FDPIR as an alternative to SNAP because they do not have easy access to SNAP offices or authorized food stores. FDPIR is authorized locally by either Indian tribal organizations or an agency of a state government. USDA purchases and ships FDPIR foods to ITOs and state agencies based on their orders from a list of available foods and provides them with administrative funding. These agencies store and distribute the food, determine the African eligibility, and provide nutrition education to recipients. We also hear from Diane Krawiski, Deputy Administrator for the Supplemental Nutrition and Safety Program, who will provide valuable insights into not only TFAB, CSFP, and FDPIR, but ultimately what is being done to improve access to healthy foods. I want to thank all of our witnesses for sharing their time and their expertise today and making the trip here to Washington. Now, I'm very pleased to recognize the ranking member of this committee, Mr. McGovern, for his opening statement.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for calling today's hearing on nutrition distribution programs. I want to thank all the witnesses for being here. Mr. Chairman, this is your first hearing as chairman of this subcommittee. I want to congratulate you, and I hope recalling the words of that great philosopher Humphrey Bogart in the movie Casablanca when he said to Claude Rains, "I think this is the beginning of a beautiful friendship," I hope. Anyway, the Emergency Food Assistants Program, TFAP, the Commodity Supplemental Food Program, and the Food Distribution Program on Indian Reservations are all critical to ensuring our most vulnerable neighbors have access to food and that they are well-deserving of our support. In particular, I'd like to highlight the incredible work of food banks in my congressional district, the Food Bank of Western Massachusetts, and the Worcester County Food Bank, in working to alleviate hunger in Central and Western Massachusetts. But with over 42 million Americans, including children, seniors, veterans, and yes, some very poor, childless adults too, living in food insecure households, I think we can all agree that more needs to be done to address hunger in our country, where the richest country in the history of the world and 42 million of our fellow citizens are hungry or food insecure. Last Congress, this subcommittee held 18 hearings on SNAP. We heard more than 30 hours of testimony from over 60 experts. We learned from these experts, conservative and liberal, that SNAP benefits should not be cut and that current benefits are inadequate. We also learned that SNAP does not discourage work and that case management and job training programs can be successful in helping to move people out of poverty, but these efforts require a well-funded, multi-year commitment. Recently, I have read in the press that Chairman Conaway will use the white paper he compiled from these hearings to make changes in our anti-hunger safety net. And I'm reading that a big part of these changes will impact 18- to 49-year-olds who do not have children, known as ABOBs, Able-Bodied Adults Without Dependence. And while it's convenient to demonize this group of vulnerable adults, the truth of the matter is, we do not have a clear picture of the ABOB population. We know it's a diverse group. We know that many have limited educational experiences, and some have mental health issues, difficult histories of substance abuse, or are ex-offenders with nowhere else to turn. And I've come to learn that up to 60,000 of them are veterans, people who served our country. So I think members of this committee could benefit, I hate to suggest another hearing, but I'm going to suggest another hearing, but maybe we could benefit from a hearing on this vulnerable population. Maybe before we start kicking people who fall into this ABOB category off of Medicaid and out of the SNAP program, we should have a hearing to explore this vulnerable population and work to understand their struggles as opposed to belittling them. Kicking vulnerable people off of food assistance does nothing to help them find work. It just makes them hungry. It's mean-spirited, and I think it's a rotten thing to do. If we are serious about any hunger in this country, we need to realize that while our states, charities, local providers, and our federal programs are all doing incredible work to alleviate hunger, more needs to be done. And charities, even with federal supports, cannot solve hunger alone. We need to maintain the structure of SNAP, increase SNAP benefits, and boost our anti-hunger safety net to reach those who are still facing incredible hardship. And we need to commit to and fund programs to provide an economic ladder to those struggling in poverty. So I look forward to the distinguished panel of witnesses, and I thank them for being here, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for yielding me the time. I yield back.
I thank the gentlemen. The chair would request that other members submit their opening statements for the record so the witnesses may begin their testimony to ensure that there is ample time for questions. And I appreciate the members' understanding. I'd like to welcome our witnesses to the table. Ms. Carrie Calvert, Director of Tax and Commodity Policy, Feeding America here in Washington, D.C. Mr. Frank Cubic, CSFP Director, Focus Hope from Detroit, Michigan. Mr. Jerry Tonnaby, Director of Food Distribution Program, Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma, Durant, Oklahoma. And Ms. Diane Krawiski, Deputy Administrator, Supplemental Nutrition Safety and Safety Programs, Food and Nutrition Service, FNS of USDA, located here in Alexandria, Virginia. Ms. Calvert, go ahead with your five minutes of testimony when you are ready.
Great, thank you. And this is actually my first time officially testifying before a congressional committee. So thank you very much for inviting me. Mr. Chairman, Ranking Member McGovern, and members of the House Agriculture Subcommittee on Nutrition, I am thrilled to be here today to talk about the nation's food distribution programs, in particular, the Emergency Food Assistance Program, also known as TFAP. I represent Feeding America, which is the nation's largest anti-hunger nonprofit, serving 46 million people each year through our network of almost 200 food banks. Our network serves every state in the country, as well as the District of Columbia, and supports 60,000 local agencies like food pantries, after-school and summer programs, senior meal sites, and soup kitchens, providing $4 billion meals each year to people in need. Our mission is to not only provide emergency food assistance to those in need today, but to engage the country in the fight to end hunger so that we can reduce the number of families that must rely on charitable food assistance tomorrow. Since its inception in the early 1980s as a program to connect surplus commodity products with emergency feeding organizations, strangely enough, it was surplus cheese that was the first product distributed through TFAP. TFAP has served a dual purpose of providing nutritious food to the nation's charitable community while supporting U.S.-grown commodities. As the program has proved its efficacy and efficiency, it has expanded to become an essential part of how food banks and other local organizations provide food to people in need. Today, TFAP has become a backbone of the nutritious food our food banks are able to distribute. So the Feeding America Network receives food from federal commodity programs like TFAP and CSFP, as well as through food donation partnerships with thousands of growers, food manufacturers, retailers, and food service companies across America. We also do purchase some of the food we distribute as well when there is a shortfall or to serve specific populations or dietary needs. Feeding America Food Banks received 723 million pounds of food from TFAP in federal fiscal year 2016, accounting for about 600 million meals. These are meals that go straight into the effort to fight hunger and to relieve food insecurity, but should be viewed as part of an array of federal nutrition programs. We know the community members we help are also often relying on SNAP, school lunch, WIC, or senior meals to meet their family's needs. Our work would not be possible without the continued strong support of federal nutrition programs. In fact, Feeding America's entire food distribution in one year equals only 10% of the food purchases provided by the SNAP program in one year. We know from Feeding America's Hunger in America 2014 report that although 55% of the people we serve participate at some time in the SNAP program, another 45% do not. Some of that population is likely eligible yet not participating, but millions of others make too much to qualify for SNAP assistance yet still need charitable food assistance. This is where strong funding for TFAP is essential to our ability to fulfill our mission. TFAP works by directly supplying nutritious food purchased by USDA to charities such as Feeding America Food Banks. In addition to the food, USDA also provides funding to defray some of the storage and distribution costs of getting the food to hungry Americans. As you can see from the pie chart here, which I apologize might be hard for you to read from where you're sitting, the foods provided through TFAP are highly nutritious and represent household pantry staples, foods that you would find in your home. In fact, protein items are the number-one categories purchased, followed by fruits and vegetables. So our food banks combine TFAP foods with other donated and purchased food to give food insecure Americans access to a nutritionally well-balanced grocery package. The Farm Bill also authorizes funds for storage and distribution, which helps defray part of the cost that food banks incur getting TFAP foods to people in need. However, it's not mandatory funding and depends on an annual appropriation. And unfortunately, the funds that are appropriated are only half of the authorized amount. So there's a significant shortfall that many of our food banks are dealing with. And frankly, it means that they have to divert funds from other valuable programs to meet that shortfall. We hope to work with you as the next Farm Bill process gets underway to not only show the significant, strong impact that TFAP foods have had and the impact that the increase in TFAP foods provided by the last Farm Bill has had in communities, but also to make the case that being able to fully fund TFAP's storage and distribution would have a significant impact on our need, our ability to invest in other programs that we're doing, such as mobile pantries, job training programs, SNAP outreach assistance in communities. There are many, many valuable programs that our food banks are actively working on, and so we would definitely appreciate stronger funding for that. And with that, I conclude my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Cubic, you're now recognized for five minutes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and members of the subcommittee. Thank you for this opportunity you've given me today. I work with the Commodity Supplemental Food Program in Detroit for an organization called Focus Hope, which is a human and civil rights nonprofit organization. I also work with the National CSFP Association. Appreciate this opportunity to speak on behalf of Focus Hope and its 41,000 monthly participants of CSFP, as well as the 600,000 monthly CSFP participants in 48 states, District of Columbia, and two Indian tribal organizations. Since 2010, CSFP has added 10 additional states. Thank you to Congress and FNS for your continued support for the program. In the Farm Bill of 2014, CSFP became an elderly-only program. We thank the subcommittee for the legislation that enables us to exclusively serve our vulnerable senior population. CSFP is a discretionary program funded through annual appropriations. While it is authorized in the Farm Bill, it receives no mandatory money. CSFP is a unique program which brings together federal and state agencies, along with public and private entities. By using their buying power, USDA was able to provide the monthly nutritionally balanced food package at a cost of less than $24 per box. That same food package goes for retail value of about $45 to $50. This makes CSFP a cost-effective program. In fiscal year 2016, CSFP provided services to more than 150 nonprofit community and faith-based organizations at 1,800 locations across the country. State agencies provide administrative oversight and contract with local and faith-based organizations to warehouse and distribute food, certify eligibility, and provide nutrition education to participants. These local organizations build collaboration among nonprofits, health providers, and area agencies on aging to provide easy access to the program. We are able to reach isolated and homebound seniors. A 2013 National CSFP Association survey showed that half of the seniors who responded reported that they lived alone with an average income of less than $750 a month. 70% of those senior respondents said they choose between food and medicine each month. Frederick is a 92-year-old World War II veteran and Tuskegee Airman. He honorably served this country at a time of his greatest need. We are now honorably trying to serve him at a time of his greatest need. For the past 10 years, Frederick and his wife have relied on their monthly CSFP food package they picked up at Focus Hope. Frederick has said, "For me and my wife, Focus Hope means food. It allows us to use our fixed income on other needs, like housing and medicine, and still eat at the end of the day." Frederick did not enroll in CSFP until he was 82 years old. He only reached out to us when he had no other choice. He needed help, and fortunately, we were able to provide him and his wife with a monthly food package. A year ago, Frederick's son passed away, and recently, his wife passed away as well. For many of us, Frederick is a hero. We are privileged to be able to help him, especially for all that he has done for our country. Barbara's story is a familiar one, seniors who are forced to take care of someone else, and in so many cases, grandchildren. Barbara has recently signed up for the first time to receive CSFP benefits. Her husband passed away suddenly. Barbara says, "At this point, at this time, I'm at a point where I can't afford to pay my medical bills, rent, utilities, and I have a mentally challenged adult son who needs medication as well as everyday necessities." CSFP is a lifeline to Barbara and other seniors in need. Providing food assistance in many cases is not enough. Many CSFP agencies network with other health providers and can bring additional assistance to low-income seniors. Volunteer services are increasing because we're able to partner with health organizations and others to bring additional help to our seniors. We have regular events at our sites, such as blood pressure checks, cholesterol screenings, eye exams, seasonal flu shots, and mobile mammograms, as well as screenings, other screenings. We are also increasing our additional help in other Focus Hope sites. Income tax assistance, utility bill payment assistance is also being offered to our community, and we are working with our local food bank to provide additional food to our CSFP participants as many other CSFP programs do. The stories I have testified, and the stories I have described in this testimony are all too typical for many seniors in this country. The lack of access to high-quality food, reliable public transportation, inadequate healthcare, and too often unsafe neighborhoods collude to make them so-called golden years far less than golden. People who have worked all their lives and have contributed so much to this nation are being neglected and left on their own at a time when they need the help the most. Indeed, there is much left to be done to address the issue of hunger and poverty, both locally and nationally. On behalf of the nation's Commodity Supplemental Food Program participants and volunteers nationwide, thank you for this opportunity to present testimony for the record. Thank you.
Mr. Cubic, thank you so much for your testimony. Mr. Tonnaby, please go ahead and proceed with your five minutes of testimony when you're ready.
[Inaudible] Jerry Tonnaby, Oklahoma Choctaw, Oklahok, Ilimpa, Ahopila, Inukasko, Sia, Hima'knitah, Ala, Lika, Tsai, Naiyupha. Hello, my name is Jerry Tonnaby. I'm the Food Distribution Director for the Choctaw Nation of Oklahoma. The Food Distribution Program The Food Distribution Program serves 93,000 Native Americans each month, about 6,000 in our Choctaw Nation area. They're among our neediest families. I know this program well, from my own personal experience on the commodity programs as a kid. I've come to have a deep respect for this program because it provides vital help to people in need. I'm passionate about serving my fellow tribal citizens who need these services today. My last name, Tonabe, is a Choctaw warrior name. This combined with my other family name of Pistobee instill in me a strong heritage of fighting for Choctaw people who need the help the most. On behalf of my chief, the Honorable Gary Batten, thank you for the opportunity to testify today on the achievements of the Choctaw Nation Food Distribution Program, our challenges, and recommendations on improvement. The Choctaw Nation serves all eligible tribal members throughout our treaty territory. That's over 11,000 miles in southeastern Oklahoma. The Choctaw Nation was designated as the First Promise Zone in January of 2014. All the 10 and 1/2 counties located within the Choctaw Nation fell into the USDA's extremely high-poverty designation. A large portion of this area is also classified as a food desert by the USDA. Our statistics on poverty, unemployment, educational attainment, health, and nutrition are among the worst in America. FDPIR is one program that helps to combat those awful statistics. FDPIR is intended to be a supplemental program, but for far too many of our tribal members, it's their primary source of healthy food. Our FDPIR items have low sodium and low-fat content. Our participants receive fresh fruit and vegetables, milk, beans, lean meats, and other items that can be prepared into full nutritional meals. Using Choctaw tribal funds, the nation has built five facilities for food distribution to give our citizens a well-rounded shopping and learning experience in a grocery store Before we built these stores, our people were handed food from the back of a truck. We believe our citizens deserve a more dignified way of obtaining food, and that's why we have invested millions of dollars of tribal funds to help mold this thing into this program. In conclusion, we offer three recommendations that would make food distribution more streamlined, as well as give tribes critical access to other federal feeding programs. Number one, remove the urban place limitation. Some towns within the Choctaw Nation are slightly larger than 10,000 residents, and we have Choctaws that live outside our treaty lands in Tulsa and Oklahoma City. We believe all of our Choctaw citizens should have access to nutritional foods in the FDPIR. Removing the urban place limitation has the unanimous support of the National Congress of American Indians. Number two, fix carryover and funding certainty. FDPIR funding can be uncertain, and the amounts can change from year to year. This forces us to guess as to what the amount of our tribal match will be each year. A carryover provision allowing us to carry forward a percentage of our annual FDPIR budget would mean better management. This would also help ease the uncertainty of late federal budget approvals. Number three, allow tribes to run the Emergency Food Assistance Program. Providing nutritious foods to our tribal citizens is of utmost importance to the Choctaw Nation. The TFAP program would be a good fit, but it does not allow for tribal administration. Instead, Choctaw Nation has to apply to the state of Oklahoma. This support takes the Choctaw tribal government to the state government and creates inefficient and impractical relationship. The Choctaw Nation has continually demonstrated our programmatic capacity and our commitment to tribe-federal partnership. We should be on par with the states for TFAP. Finally, as you prepare for the next Farm Bill, your subcommittee has a unique opportunity to further improve how Indian countries' nutritional needs are met. The Choctaw Nation stands with you and is ready to embrace that opportunity. Yakup Key.
Thank you, Mr. Tonabe, for your testimony. Ms. Krawitzki, please go ahead and proceed with your five minutes of testimony whenever you're ready. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairman Thompson and Ranking Member McGovern, for this opportunity to appear before you today. I'm pleased to share information regarding the commodity distribution programs, which are part of the nation's safety net of nutrition assistance programs administered by the Food Nutrition Service. As a deputy administrator for supplemental nutrition and safety programs, I'm the career senior executive overseeing the commodity distribution programs. I've served FNS for over 30 years at all levels in the organization. We commonly call the commodity distribution programs the USDA Foods Programs to emphasize the fact that these programs provide 100% domestically-produced, high-quality, and nutritious foods. USDA foods are distributed through a variety of organizations and nutrition assistance programs. Today, I will focus my remarks on the smaller but critical portion of USDA Foods programs that are distributed to low-income households through three Farm Bill-authorized programs: the Emergency Food Assistance Program, or TFAP; the Food Distribution Program on Indian Reservations, known as FDPIR; and the Commodity Supplemental Food Program, known as CSFP. Additionally, USDA foods are distributed through FNS's National School Lunch Program and Child and Adult Care Food Program, which make up the bulk of our purchases of USDA foods. In fiscal year 2016, over 200 USDA food items valued at over $2 billion were purchased from food producers in almost every state and distributed to program operators across the country. These purchases not only support our agriculture producers and farm economy, they ensure the most vulnerable people have access to nutritious foods through our programs. USDA foods are 100% American-grown, meeting the highest safety and nutrition standards and including high-quality fruits, vegetables, dairy products, whole grains, lean meats, poultry, and fish that contribute to a healthy diet. TFAP helps supplement the diets of low-income people by providing them with food at no cost. Through TFAP, USDA offers a variety of food items to state distributing agencies in sizes appropriate for household distribution. States then order food items from the list of available USDA foods and provide it to local agencies they have selected, usually food banks, which in turn distribute the foods to local organizations, such as soup kitchens and food pantries that directly serve the public. States may also provide USDA foods to local organizations, which distribute foods directly to low-income households. The Food Distribution Program on Indian Reservations, or FDPIR, provides a monthly package of USDA foods to low-income households living on Indian reservations and to low-income American Indian households residing in approved service areas near reservations or in Oklahoma. It serves as an alternative to the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, for households residing in areas where food stores may not be readily accessible. The last program I'd like to mention is the Commodity Supplemental Food Program, or CSFP. The 2014 Farm Bill amended the eligibility requirements for CSFP, phasing out women, infants, and children, and transitioning it to a program focused on providing nutrition assistance to the elderly. The program works to improve the health of low-income persons aged 60 and over by providing a monthly food package comprised of specific nutritious USDA foods which supplement their diets. Each of these programs is operated as a federal-state partnership. The federal government provides the resources, USDA foods, and administrative funding to state agencies or Indian tribal organizations. They are then responsible for submitting orders for USDA foods and establishing a distribution system to local program operators. To procure the food ordered by our program operators, FNS works closely with USDA's Agricultural Marketing Service, or AMS, who serves as our procurement office. AMS follows federal procurement requirements to purchase and provide USDA foods in the quantities and the varieties needed to meet the demands of our programs. AMS also identifies and approves food manufacturers, issues and accepts bids, and ultimately awards contracts for the purchase and delivery of USDA foods ordered by the states. While the Food Nutrition Service provide administrative funding as appropriated by Congress to states and Indian tribal organizations for the operation of these programs, I want to recognize that many state and local organizations, as well as Indian tribal organizations, also provide financial and in-kind support to help maximize the administrative resources available from the federal government. I am proud of the dual mission of the Food Nutrition Service and USDA Foods Program, supporting domestic agriculture and supplementing the nutrition needs of low-income people. These programs play an important role in stimulating the agricultural economy and ensuring the most vulnerable populations have access to high-quality, safe, and nutritious foods. I look forward to your questions on the operational aspects of these programs. As you know, I'm unable to answer questions on forward-looking policy at this time.
Ms. Krawitzki, thank you so much for your testimony. Thank you to all the panel that's here for sharing your expertise. The chair would like to remind members that they'll be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized in the order of arrival and appreciate the members' understanding. Now, I'm going to recognize myself initially here for five minutes of questions. I want to start with Ms. Krawitzki. This committee has had numerous hearings about SNAP, and today, we've had a chance to talk about several commodity distribution programs. I want to understand if there is any overlap in the programs that we have discussed here and why these three programs are needed in addition to SNAP.
Thank you for your question. As you know, our programs at the Food Nutrition Service, 15 nutrition assistance programs, really work to complement each program. So, where there is a direct overlap really is in FDPIR and SNAP. They do, you do need to choose as a participant what program that you want to go into. They may choose to participate in FDPIR. They may go out of FDPIR and choose to receive SNAP benefits. So, you're not allowed to be, you're only allowed to be in one of those programs at the time. The other two programs, CSFP and TFAP, serve a unique population and serve to fill the gaps that a person receiving SNAP may have. I know you've heard stories of recipients of SNAP running out of food before the end of the month. That's exactly when you'd see them going to a food bank or a food pantry and picking up a bag of foodstuffs that would help them get through the month until that next SNAP benefit arrives. We also know that seniors participate in SNAP at much lower levels. Right now, we're happy to report, we think we have about a 40% coverage rate of seniors in SNAP. However, there is a minimum benefit for seniors that is fairly small, $16. You would see those same seniors being able to supplement their SNAP purchases by going through and enrolling in CSFP and receiving a box, as we mentioned, valued at close to $50 of, again, nutritious, healthy food produced by U.S. farmers that they can take home and help them get through the month. So, while we know that there is some thought abroad that these are duplicative programs, we would assert that they are there supporting each other and weaving the nutritional safety net that everybody needs to get through the month.
Thank you very much. Ms. Calvert, both your testimony and the white paper on the TFAP program referenced, mentioned that nearly half of households participating in TFAP and report that they are, and report that they're not participating in SNAP. And while some of those may be ineligible, can you speak to why households in need may rely on TFAP and not pursue SNAP? And do you think that households are more likely to access TFAP on a one-time or episodic basis, or are they obtaining TFAP benefits to meet an ongoing need?
Sure, I'm happy to address that. First, you know, when we did our last Hunger in America survey, we asked clients how many were in a household receiving SNAP benefits. 55% of them were. And if we look at the reported income levels of people we're serving, you know, we'd estimate that potentially up to, you know, an additional 10% to 15% above that are eligible but not participating. There's many reasons for that. They may be unaware. They might have family assets that make them ineligible even though their reported income seems like SNAP should be an option for them. Most of our food banks operate either SNAP outreach, or many of them now are doing SNAP application assistance. So, it's our goal, when people come to us for help, to figure out how we can provide services to them, including figuring out what federal programs they may be eligible for. But as Ms. Krawitzki said in her answer to your earlier question, many people are turning to us for food distributions that include TFAP foods when their SNAP benefits are running out. They're just not lasting long enough, and without enough income coming into the family, they need charitable food assistance to fill that gap. You know, we saw a big change after 2007, 2008, with a lot of families coming to us for longer episodes of need rather than, we certainly still do see families that come to us because of a short-term economic situation, but much, 54% of the clients that we serve have visited a food pantry for at least six months or more, when we look at our frequency of use data. And certainly, we don't see that trend abating.
Thank you. Ms. Kubick, I just, well, actually, at this point, my time has kind of expired, so I'll try to follow back around. I have a question that maybe we can talk one-on-one about transportation barriers. I belong to Howard Area Lions Club, very proud of, we operate the food bank in my area, and as a lion, we do a lot of delivery for folks who don't have transportation issues. But I'll circle back with you individually on that. My time has expired, and please recognize the ranking member, Mr. McGovern, for five minutes of questioning.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Calvert, as I mentioned in my opening statement, I'm concerned about this group called ABODs, or able-bodied adults without dependents. And I'm reading from an AgriPulse report that the chairman of this committee spoke to their Farm Bill summit, and he basically called into question the current law that allows able-bodied adults without dependents to collect SNAP benefits for 90 days out of a three-year period. And he's quoted as saying, "If they're able to work, why would they have 90 days?" And as I mentioned in my opening, I mean, this group is very difficult to define, but extremely vulnerable to food insecurity, and under SNAP rules are held to a very strict time limit on the benefits. So, I suspect that your network serves a lot of ABODs, and there's a surprisingly small amount of information on this group. They have, many of them have barriers to employment, like illiteracy, or undiagnosed mental illness, or drug dependence, or homelessness, or, as I mentioned earlier, we know that there's a number of them that are returning veterans who are struggling to reintegrate into society. So, given the nationwide work that your network does for this group, what kind of information do you have on ABODs? Who are they? Why are they so difficult to reach? And just as a follow-up, I understand, as I understand it, there are limitations in some places as to how many times per month people can access food packages from food banks. So, can you speak to that as well? And if ABODs are kicked out of SNAP, and there is a limit to the food they can access from food banks, where do these vulnerable adults turn to?
Thank you for your question. I would agree that serving able-bodied adults without dependents and assessing what their challenges and barriers are to employment is a very, very difficult task. First, I think it's important to realize that, as you've stated earlier, most childless adults on SNAP who can work do so. But there are multiple challenges, including homelessness, physical and mental health limitations, language barriers, lack of educational attainment, as well as unstable employment histories or criminal records that can really complicate the path to employment for many able-bodied adults without dependents. Some of the best data we have on that is coming from our Food Bank State Association in Ohio, so I'd be happy to connect all of the subcommittee members with those findings, since it might take some time to go into it here. But I think it's very important that, as the committee looks at this population in the next Farm Bill, that you really take a look at the, what data is there on, you know, how do we assess what intervention will help an unemployed adult attain a job? Because sometimes, it's really not that simple, as you know. You know, many of our food banks are involved in job training programs. Those are very costly to do right, so there's a lot of work to collectively be done here to address this population. On the subject of pantries, most pantries that our food banks serve do restrict the number of times people can come, to around two or three times a month for food distributions. Frankly, it's because there's not enough food to distribute to everyone coming. So, there's a real challenge for people when they lose SNAP benefits because they are going to have limited avenues for that food.
I appreciate that. And, Mr. Kubick, there have been rumored proposals for the next Farm Bill that would change the age of those eligible under the ABOD rule from 59 to, for example, 65. Given your experience with kind of the older population, are there many low-income, hungry Americans between 60 and 65 who could find a job in a three-month time period so as to maintain their SNAP benefits? And how would such a change affect your organization?
Well, I can speak for the area I live in. I'm in Detroit. We represent the metropolitan Detroit area. It's difficult to find work for people under 60 at this point in our area. So, a lack of skilled workers is a real problem in Michigan, that we can't provide workers with... provide workers for the jobs that are there. I can only imagine that those seniors that are over 60 would have difficulty filling those jobs as well, but even finding the jobs that unskilled workers qualify for. So that would be difficult for our seniors to even try to find jobs like that. Those that can work do work.
Right. I would just conclude by saying that this population doesn't fit into a stereotype or a neat generalization. It's a complicated population, and I think we need to be very careful in this committee before we start going down a road that may end up adversely impacting, you know, many Americans in a way where they'll literally go hungry. And there aren't many options available to them when they get cut off of this benefit. So I hope we could do a hearing. I hope we better understand who we're talking about and before we do something that we're going to regret. Thank you.
The gentleman yields back. Please recognize Mr. Marshall for five minutes.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think my first question's for Ms. Calvert. Ms. Calvert, my family has been very involved in this issue on a personal basis. My wife volunteered for the food bank for years. We helped with soup kitchens, Meals on Wheels, taking my kids on the Meals on Wheels trips. Our senior centers are so, so important in rural Kansas, often the only meals that they have. We all work together. The grocers work together. It's a beautiful thing. And what I see is that the big success of that is local people helping each other. And that's what I love about the program. What can we do to accentuate the positive? What can we do to help empower those local people to do more and do what they love doing that we're not doing now?
I would agree that, you know, volunteerism and the commitment to giving back, I think, is part of what makes this country great. We see that all the time in our network. In fact, 2 million, 2 million volunteers each year are helping at our food banks, and it's a significant, I'll be honest with you, it's a significant part of the manpower that helps keep a lot of these smaller agencies in local communities going. So we know that there's no way that we could do what we do without that, that volunteer army of support. In terms of supporting volunteerism, I think something that comes up, and I hesitate to raise it because it's not in the jurisdiction of this committee, the volunteer mileage reimbursement rate is fairly low. And so there's been proposals in past tax bills to raise that, the allowable volunteer mileage reimbursement rate to a higher rate, because a lot of our volunteers are delivering meals, they're helping provide an extra set of hands to deliver things in local communities, whether it's mobile pantries or Meals on Wheels. And, you know, the reimbursement rate can be an impediment to volunteers doing more of that.
Okay. All right. I think my next question's for Ms. Krawinski. Krawinski, I apologize.
Okay.
In my own communities, it's hard to believe that we have food insecurities. We have mountains of wheat we can't sell, mountains of sorghum we can't sell, they're just sitting there and rotting. Do we ever, in years of plenty like this, is there any type of storage opportunity so we can use this in the future?
So what I would say is that FNS and AMS work together to identify both the needs from our participants as they order food. On our approved food list, we have over 200 items of foods that they can order against. And to the degree that those foods are on that food list, we can certainly, that is an opportunity. But it's not, it's not going to be easy for us to reach down to a food that we're not currently offering and offer assistance. The other aspect of USDA's food purchases rests with purchases under Section 32, which would be looking to do market support purchases for crops in excess, to the extent that the Secretary of Agriculture makes those decisions and provides those foods to AMS, who then turn around and ask FNS if they're suitable to be distributed for households in TFAP. That's another avenue that I could go.
Okay. Probably the two biggest concerns I have now with food insecurity issues in my state are, number one is preschool-age kids that are not getting adequate nutrition for their brains to develop for their full potential, and weekends, weekends for our kids and the summers to some extent. What are we doing to help reach preschool kids and the weekend kids? And I don't know if, who wants to answer the question first? Who knows? Ms. Calvert, go ahead.
Well, I'll jump in and just talk about the challenge of serving kids in the summertime. There's a huge gap between the number of children that are participating and the National School Lunch Program for free and reduced-price lunch during the school year, and children that are receiving food during the summer. And certainly, there are a lot of barriers to that. One of the things that our food banks find, especially in larger service areas, even in suburbs, but also in rural areas, is that there aren't a lot of waivers to the congregate requirement. So I think this might be an area where some additional regulatory flexibility would enable many, many more food banks to actually participate and be reimbursed through the summer food program. Especially in Kansas, this can be a problem. You know, Kansas, the Kansas Food Bank serves a significant amount of really rural counties there. Costs a lot of money to do that. It's hard to operate a summer meal site if you've got 20 kids in one community, 30 in another. Gets a little cost prohibitive.
And gentleman's time's expired. Now, recognize the gentlelady from Ohio, Ms. Fudge, for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And let me just first thank my colleagues, Representatives Davis and Goodlett, for joining me on our annual TFAP appropriations letter, where we requested $329 million for TFAP and another $100 million for storage and distribution. So I want to thank my colleagues for that. You know, Mr. Chairman, as I look at where we are and try to pull all this together, if I look at the effects of what Trump Care is going to do, which is going to make elderly, poor, and sick people pay an awful lot more for their healthcare. They're going to pay a lot more for their prescription drugs. Healthcare may actually send them into bankruptcy. When I look at the elimination of the Community Development Block grant, which is going to do away with Meals on Wheels, when I look at the fact that we're going to cut $6 billion from HUD, which is going to put more veterans on the street, more seniors on the street, and more children will become homeless. So if they're homeless, they probably don't have any food either. If I look at the cuts to after-school programs that are being proposed in this budget, and the cuts to school nutrition, I'm trying to figure out how our chairman could this morning say he is willing, this is his quote, "Food aid is one of the things I'd cut." Please tell me how you think all of those other cuts that are proposed are going to affect food in this country, anybody? Let's just start, Ms. Calvin, going down the line.
Sounds great. It's a little hard to comment on something when we just have high-level details without the specific line items, but there are many numerous valuable programs funded through Community Development Block grants, Meals on Wheels being one of them, that we would see having a domino impact on communities that we operate in if those funds were cut. There's been a long, bystanding tradition to fund international food aid through the McGovern Dole. Right.
What I think what I'm really trying to get to is, if all of those other programs are either eliminated or cut, certainly, it is going to put more strain on the food programs.
Absolutely. Absolutely. You know, when we, we look at the number of people that have been able to obtain health coverage, and we look at our data on the trade-offs people say they're making, they're already making trade-offs between food and utilities, food and medicine. It's not a far jump to realize that a lot of the changes that Congress is considering right now are going to, could potentially increase food insecurity and will add to the burdens that many of our organizations feel.
Thank you. I'd like to just try to get everybody a little time to answer. Just please, Mr. Kubik, please.
When I hear about cuts like this, and I think about the seniors that I deal with, and we deal with across the country, who are making do already unlimited resources, they're not always able to access some programs that they could possibly use because of transportation issues, isolation, not being able to get out. We know the strain that we're under when folks come and they need more food than we can provide for them. We can refer them to other networks, but it's difficult. Any, any problems in that chain, anything where there's something disappears that's not there, it's there now, just would compound the problem for seniors. The choices, as Carrie said, about choosing between medicine and food, that's a reality for so many people. So if we're going to remove some part of that system, that support system, it's going to be devastating to seniors, making them go to work when they don't, when they have health issues, it's going to be difficult. So it would be catastrophic for a lot of seniors.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, I agree. These cuts would affect things like the summer food programs or the after-school feeding programs that our tribe is just starting to get involved in some of these things and setting up places where we can feed our children during the summer or after school, sending backpacks home with kids. Cuts to these programs are going to affect those, and not only that, but training programs that are trying to get people back to work. If we make cuts where, that would affect those, then it's going to increase our load as far as the number of participants we're going to be trying to serve, because people are not able to find jobs if they're not able to get trained.
Thank you very much. I'm not going to put you on the spot, Ms. Krawinski, but if you'd like to respond, go right ahead.
I would just say that the federal nutrition safety net depends on all the strands being there. Once those strands are gone, there's gaps. And when those gaps need to be filled, they turn to our programs. And I would expect an impact on both TFAP and the mandatory side with the mandatory formula. It would actually ratchet up the need for additional funding. For FDPIR, the same aspect would occur. And on a discretionary side for CSFP, which is entirely discretionary, it would make it very difficult for that program to grow under constraining discretionary spending.
Thank you very much. I yield back, Mr. Chairman.
Gentleman's time has expired. Now, recognize the gentleman from Arkansas, Mr. Crawford, for five minutes of questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Kubik, your testimony, you mentioned both home delivery and pickup on CSFP food packages. Can you talk about the distribution process and give us a little more detail on that?
Yeah, thank you for the question. Yeah, a lot of our seniors can get to our sites. We have four fixed sites, but we cover four counties, so it's hard to expect folks to drive to our sites. A lot of them don't have reliable transportation, and public transportation in our areas is limited. So we work with groups, and not only our volunteer groups and ourselves, to get our food to our seniors who are homebound or take it to their apartment building. We're fortunate that we have a lot of support in the community from some of the businesses there, because our organization doesn't have the resources by itself to reach all these homebound seniors. So we're able to reach them through the volunteer groups and through our own staff. And once that senior's signed up, we can also assign a proxy. That senior can choose a proxy to pick up the food for them during the certification period. So if that senior has health issues, doesn't have good transportation, they can have a proxy pick up the food. But it's important that we get that senior initially the first time. So we get a lot of calls from folks who may be blocks away from our sites. You get approximately 30 pounds of food if you don't have a car. Like I said, our public transportation is lacking in our area. It's difficult for seniors to get out. There's safety concerns as well, because so many people prey on seniors and take advantage of them. So we have a network in place, working with other groups in the area, not only, again, nonprofit groups, but businesses who step forward. Some of the schools will help out also with getting the food to the homebound seniors and those in apartment buildings. So we're very fortunate that we have a network in place that can get to those seniors.
Are there any particular policy changes you would advocate for, for us to consider?
You know, I can just speak for, again, my program on this one, but I think the process is pretty fair with that proxy allowance for the seniors. If that wasn't in place, that would be difficult for a lot of those seniors to get to us, because they just couldn't physically come to our site. As long as that proxy's there and we can send a volunteer, a trained volunteer or staff person that senior's home, we can sign the person up and get the food to them.
Ms. Krawinski, your testimony, you mentioned the various types of commodity foods available in each of the programs. How does USDA evaluate the nutritional value of the foods provided through CSFP, TFAP, and FDPIR? What I'm asking, are there, are there ways the department is working to improve nutritional quality?
So we've undertaken a 10-year review of all the offerings of USDA foods, and we're very pleased to report that of our 200-plus USDA foods, what we offer today to all of the programs that use USDA foods are lower in salt, sugar, and fat. We've completely changed the nutritional profile of our offerings, as some of our witnesses testified today. We have a number of nutritionists on staff at FNS that continue to provide technical guidance and advice as needed. We also produce a number of nutrition education products that are available to the public at no cost. We continue, this is a continuous process. We will continue, as we look at additional foods to add or subtract, to look at the nutritional profile, to make sure that it fits within the nutritional standards for the dietary guidelines for Americans and other nutritional advice.
Okay. Thank you. And anybody wants to comment on this? In many cases, food preparation is just as important as the type of food selected or distributed. So I'm interested to hear from the panel about current efforts underway, educational efforts that you have shown have been effective. Ms. Calvert, it looks like you want to weigh in on that. And can you give us your views on practical, easy-to-understand nutrition education recommendations and how they benefit your constituents?
Sure. We've really focused on trying to involve the entire family in the, you know, either food distribution or nutrition education process. We know that when families are able to, like, let's say, there's, actually, there's a bunch of models here in DC, but all of our food banks operate this, especially in your state as well. They've been really active in implementing Share of Strength's Cooking Matters, a nutrition education module, which I think has made a real difference. But by involving the entire family, you know, having a demonstration of, here's how to cook the meal, everyone tastes it, here's the recipe card, here's the food distribution from the food bank to take this home so that you can cook this meal yourself, it's a lot easier to, you know, educate people on the fruits and vegetables that we're distributing. We're distributing over a billion pounds of fresh fruits and vegetables every year. I know how much effort it's taken my children to be willing to even look at spaghetti squash covered in meatballs and spaghetti sauce. So certainly, our food banks are really, really aware of the need to focus on this.
Thank you. My time's expired. Yield back.
The gentleman yields back. Please recognize the gentleman from Florida, Mr. Soto, now for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we all know, since 1996, there has been a work requirement in the SNAP program, so able-bodied adults without dependents have to work. The only exception is with age or disability or other specific reasons that are approved. So all we're talking about in the potential reform is about whether able-bodied adults without dependents can qualify for a limited exception of three months in a three-year period. And so my question for Ms. Calvert and Mr. Kublik is, do you know what the percentage of SNAP recipients are that are able-bodied adults without dependents? And based upon that, do we know what the savings would be in benefits and the additional costs if we were to take this segment and limited three-month exception out of the program?
Thank you for the question. That question is kind of difficult for me to answer, in that a lot of our seniors, qualifications are different for CSFP and SNAP. So without knowing particularly every senior's financial state, I couldn't tell you whether they all qualify. So I don't know what impact this would have, particularly on CSFP. But as I think I mentioned earlier, it just seems it would be very difficult for seniors to, you know, be in the workforce, and it's that those that work, that can work, are working, that need a job. But jobs are hard to find, and I think realistically, it'd be difficult for our program participants.
I would just add that I think one of the most important things to look at when you're focusing on that is, you know, what are the barriers? How recent have the able-bodied adults without dependents that are on SNAP been employed? You know, about 75% have either been working in the year before or after they've received SNAP. So one of the things that, when we look at this population, we realize that most of them are living in extreme poverty, averaging, in fact, less than, and are not eligible for many other government supports. So I think that's the, the thing that I'd like to focus on there. There's a real need to examine what meaningful employment and training means and what the barriers are to obtaining employment for this population.
Thank you. Ms. Krawinski, since you're the numbers person from USDA, what is the percentage of SNAP recipients that are adults, able-bodied adults without dependents?
So while I am the senior executive in charge of the programs we're talking about today, I am not overseeing SNAP, but I can certainly go back and get that number for you.
And so we don't know today what the savings would be in the benefits or the additional costs to the program if we exempted out this limited three-month, every-three-year exception?
Thank you.
I would just say, Mr. Chairman, we, these are numbers that we would have to have in order to make an informed decision on whether we can... order to make an informed decision on whether we can eliminate this limited exception to the work requirement for the three-month, every-three-year period, so that we can make this decision with all the information needed. And I yield back the remainder of my time.
A gentleman yields back. And I'll also note that we're really here looking at these three programs. And quite frankly, I don't think we're drawing any conclusions. That's the purpose of hearings, to try to flush out details and good information so that going forward, we can set good policy based on good information. So, please recognize the gentleman, Mr. Davis, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you to all of my colleagues who are talking about an issue that's been very important to me over my four and a half years as a member of this committee. Very appreciative of my good friend, Ms. Fudge, who is one of my co-leaders in trying to ensure that our TFAP funding is stable for those who need it the most, those in districts all throughout this country who use this program. And we need to make, continue to make sure the funding is there to get that food to those who can't afford to get it themselves. Ms. Calvert, you spoke to the committee about the need for additional TFAP support in a more stable manner in the next farm bill. Can you maybe just elaborate on that point?
Sure. The 2014 farm bill included an additional $205 million over 10 years for TFAP. Now, most of that funding was front-loaded. So, you know, in fiscal year 2015, there was an additional $50 million for TFAP, and the next year, $40 million. Then it went down to $15 million. So, the idea behind that was to, hopefully, as the economy improved and more people were obtaining full-time employment, food banks would be seeing an alleviation of demand for their services as the TFAP funding went down. Unfortunately, we haven't seen that. A lot of people that have gone back to work, it's been more part-time or seasonal employment. So, and since it is not in the baseline, we're really starting over in terms of advocating for more TFAP funding in the next farm bill. So, based on the demand patterns we're seeing at our food banks, we feel that it would be definitely a much more reliable source of support for our food banks if the baseline funding for TFAP was increased per year rather than a one-time infusion that scaled down. If we're not seeing demand scale down, then that might not be the best policy approach.
Okay. You also note that currently TFAP administrative funding is appropriated at about half of its authorized level, and that provided funds account for just 23%, 23% of the cost of distribution for food banks. And my good friends in Springfield, Illinois, and Champaign, Illinois, Pam and Jim do an excellent job of advocating on behalf of Feeding America. So, I want to ask on their behalf, if additional funds were appropriated for TFAP administration, what improvements or changes could the food banks in your network make?
Sure. So, TFAP storage and distribution, when we, to find out that 23% number, we really look at, food banks report to us their operating expenses for all sorts of things. We back out all the other expenses that aren't related to TFAP, and, you know, what is your staff, your refrigerator trucks, your storage costs, your gas. I mean, it costs money to get food to people, obviously. So, the fact that it's only covered at 23%, that means the food bank is using privately raised dollars that could be going into backpack programs, SNAP outreach, job training, you know, weekend feeding or summer feeding programs. And instead, they're needing to use those funds for that shortfall. So, I definitely don't want to put words in Jim's mouth because he has
Oh, you don't have, yeah.
Excellent food bank, and I know he's not afraid to tell you what those additional funds would mean to him. But those are some of the trade-offs that a lot of our food banks have to make. You know, Roadrunner Food make in New Mexico, they have their own long-haul truck because it costs so much to get food across the state. I mean, a significant amount of money that they're having to make up there.
Well, obviously, you've got some experience working with many of the individuals that I serve who serve our communities with very important programs. So, thank you for your willingness to work with those food banks in the district I serve, and thank you for your willingness to work on these issues and to each of you for being here today. I yield back.
Gentleman yields back. Please recognize the gentleman from California, Mr. Banana, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. And thanks to all the witnesses for being here, taking the time to prepare, and actually coming here and testifying. So, thank you very much. I hail from the central coast of California, as my colleagues are going to get sick of me saying, I'm the salad bowl of the world. Number of diverse crops, fruits, vegetables, you name it, we got it. Obviously, our food banks there have pretty easy access to these fruits and vegetables that are there. One, because of the geography, but two, because the growers have actually stepped up and donated a significant amount of their products to these food banks, which is actually fantastic. But I would imagine there's other places throughout our country that don't have as easy of access to fresh fruits and vegetables. And so, my question to anybody who would be willing to answer it would be, are there any steps that have been taken recently in order to make sure that fresh fruits and vegetables are accessible to seniors or other people who qualify for these programs?
No, the Choctaw Nation and the FDPIR program, we're provided fresh fruits and vegetables through a DOD program, and it's shipped directly to our stores. Now, we order weekly and allow our clients to come as often as they want to our stores to shop, so they are able to get fresh fruit and vegetables on a weekly basis. So, you know, seniors, whoever, all of them are, have the availability of fresh fruits and vegetables.
Good.
We've really found that USDA does a great job, especially when there's bonus commodity opportunities. If there's an easy way to distribute that as a fresh fruit and vegetable to the food banks or the TFAP agencies in the area, they definitely will. But, you know, the nutrition profile of many of the fruits and vegetables that are offered through TFAP, I mean, you know, fresh is great, but just access to fruits and vegetables is amazing. And especially if our food banks are able to, you know, combine that with locally sourced fresh fruits and vegetables, I think that really makes for a powerful combination.
Great.
What we do at our agency is that we're fortunate. The local food bank does give us about a million pounds of fruits and vegetables every year. It's not enough to serve all of our participants, but it's nice to have that for those who are there when the trucks arrive from the food bank. But we also encourage our participants to use, if they're participating in SNAP and CSFP, consider using CSFP for the goods that we can provide, and use SNAP for the fresh produce and the items that we don't have. We also work with our farmers' market in Detroit so that during the summer season, they come to our site once a year, once a week, and they do accept the SNAP card, the bridge card in Michigan, that you can use that to get your produce also. So, we're trying to bring, come a ways to bring produce into the community. We're in a food desert, but we're hoping that, working with partners like our food banks, our farmers' markets, that we can get other, new, fresh produce into the hands of seniors.
Great.
I just want to mention the DOD program. We're very proud that we're in partnership with DOD to provide fresh fruits and vegetables, both to the National School Lunch Program as well as FDPIR. We're up to offering over 42 kinds of fresh fruits and vegetables to our tribal members. In addition, we purchase, as Carrie mentioned, large truckloads of fresh apples and different fresh produce that can go into TFAP. And then lastly, another one of those programs that supports CSFP is the Senior Farmers Market Program. And that's a good connection between CSFP and the Senior Farmers Market Program.
Outstanding. Great. Thank you all again. I yield back my time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I thank the gentleman. Now, please recognize a gentleman from Florida, Mr. Yoho, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate you all being here and appreciate the work you do. Being a recipient of food stamps a long, long, long time ago, I understand the importance of that, and I appreciate the outreach that you guys do and the education. Mrs. Krawitzki, you know, as we've talked about many times in this hearing about, we've had multiple hearings on SNAP, and today we've had a chance to talk about several commodity distribution programs. I want to understand if there is any overlap in the programs we have discussed here and why these three programs are needed in addition to SNAP. What's your thoughts on that?
So, first, let me start by the three programs. There is a choice to be made for our participants between participating in the SNAP program and FDPIR. So, it's either one or the other. It's not both together. The other two programs, CSFP and TFAP, can be used in conjunction with the SNAP program. And in fact, what we know is that the SNAP benefit, as it goes through the month, we have families and individuals running out of food, and they would access the TFAP program to fill that short food gap, maybe for a week or two. It may be a one-time hit, or it may be that they go to the food bank almost monthly towards the end of the month when they run out of food. Similarly, the senior participation in the SNAP program is fairly low, and their minimum benefit is around $16. And so, we would see CSFP as supplementing and complementing the SNAP program and being able to provide 100% domestic foods to our seniors to be able to take home, shelf-stable, would last a little longer.
Thank you. Mr. Tanubi, did I say that right? What programs did you say that gives funding for the fresh fruits and vegetables?
Sorry, it's the DOD program, Department of Defense.
That's what I thought. I wasn't aware of that. And then, again, Ms. Krawitzki, it's my understanding that there are difference in types of products allowed under each of the three commodity distribution programs that have been the focus of today's hearing. Can you describe why they are different, why there are differences in what commodities are available?
Certainly. I do want to clarify that the funding for the DOD program is actually our funding. We pull it off of the funding that FNS receives and is set aside for our tribes to order fresh fruits and vegetables for DOD. The reason that there are, first let me point out that there's over 40 types of products that are available to all three programs. In addition, the programs both have a specific population they're trying to reach, and they have specific construction. CSFP and FDPIR is a defined food box with categories of foods that need to fit in it. FDPIR actually has the most offerings from our food because we're trying to replace what might be, what they might have accessible in a food store. So, they have a wider variety to be able to fit into a fuller package. CSFP has, the package contents have evolved over time, and historically, they do have a, both CSFP and the FDPIR package have a very high nutritional profile. Our Healthy Eating Index at USDA suggests that it's over 70% in terms of the nutritional profile. For a normal American, we're usually around 50%. And then finally, TFAP is a completely demand-driven system. We offer, we offer foods that states can choose to take or not take, so they are, they really have a shopping list that they can go through. And a lot of their choices depend on what they know they're already getting, or they anticipate getting in the public side of donations.
Thank you. Ms. Calvert, one of the things I've seen in our district is, you know, the big food trucks, the semi-tractor trailers will show up, and they'll go to an area that there's a lot of homeless people, and they'll give out frozen chickens or, you know, frozen goods. But people don't have ovens or refrigeration to store them in. And, you know, when you look at a program like that, we want to be as efficient as we can. Have you guys got safeguards to prevent those kind of things?
Yeah. This might be dangerous to make this statement, but I feel fairly
I do that all the time.
Fairly confident that our food banks in your district are not distributing frozen chicken out of a truck to a population that does not have the facilities to cook them. I think it's
I have seen that. I have been there. And it was like, come on, guys.
Right. No, and I don't doubt that there are some food distribution programs that do that. And it's, they mean well, but I think it's very important to know who you're serving. So, certainly, many of our food banks, you know, you know, the food we would distribute to a homeless population through a mobile pantry would be a lot different than the food we distribute, would distribute, like in a school setting or to a family.
Okay.
So, all of our food banks are required to undergo a third-party scored food safety audit with us. They have a contract with us. There's plenty of regulatory safeguards in place with the TFAP program as well.
All right.
And we audit our food banks every year to make sure they're in compliance with it.
Thank you.
Yep.
The gentleman's time has expired. The chairman wants to take a point of personal privilege, just given the fact that Nutrition Matters and Farmers Feed, we've been joined, at least for a short time, by members of the Pennsylvania FFA leadership is here. And so, we welcome them and thank them for, for being a part of our future, of being able to grow this food that we're talking about, how we get it to Americans in need. And keeping with the Pennsylvania theme, it's an honor to welcome my colleague from Pennsylvania and recognize him for five minutes of questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I'd like to start off with a question and go to the three organizations, starting with Feeding America. What's the typical profile of the people that your network serves, and how has that profile changed over the recent years?
Thank you for your question. In some ways, there's no typical profile, but we do know some things about our network and who we're serving. So, 46 million people that we're serving, 12 million children, 7 million seniors. 39% of people we're serving have a client, a child in the household under the age of 18. One in three households that we serve has a household member that's a senior, over 60 years of age. Many people that we serve are working. I think that's what I really want to focus on. More than half the households we serve have had one or more people in the household employed in the last year. You know, nearly three-quarters of people we're serving live at or below the poverty line. So, I think I want to, I want you to realize that many of the people we're serving are working or want to work. The other challenge that we see is that many people might be making too much to qualify for federal help, and they may not qualify for SNAP nutrition assistance. And so, they may need to turn to the food banks. You've got some great ones in your district. Philabundance is one of our members in Philadelphia, and I know they, they serve many of the working poor that may not qualify for SNAP.
Our programs serve seniors 60 and over, and the typical senior has an income on our program about $750 a month or less, and about half of them live alone. Their challenges are trying to make ends meet on a limited income, choosing between food, medicine, utilities. One of the biggest calls we get for help is for utility assistance, which is why we have a utility provider now who is in our site offering that assistance. But even in home repairs, there's so many challenges seniors have, transportation issues, food is just one of many. And so, we try to inform people, either through advocacy or through our volunteer network. A lot of volunteers come in and want to package food or do a home delivery, and they sometimes think that may be the only issue seniors have is not having enough food. So, we try to let the senior talk to that person, not only say, you know, what their needs are beyond food. And so many seniors, we find out that food is just one of many issues that they have.
Obviously, as a tribal organization, our profile is 100% Native Americans, or at least there has to be one household member that has to be a Native American. There can be a child in the household, a mother that's not Native, but there has to be at least one Native in the household. Most of the time, their employment is challenged in our area. It's a high unemployment area for our tribal members. We run, you know, anywhere from 25% to 75% higher unemployment rate than the state does. But it's just low-income people that are having a difficult time, is basically the profile of our people.
Ms. Cavett, can you shed light on Feeding America's work on food waste and the importance of federal incentives for food and fund donations?
Yeah, I'd love to talk about that. So, I like to say that we've been involved in trying to reduce food waste since it became a hip issue for people to focus on. But I think it's really a matter of, you know, how do we use our resources wisely? With 70 billion pounds of food being wasted every year, obviously, there's, there's a lot at stake to try to get this nutritious food to people in need, especially when you look at where a lot of the available food is. You know, there's a lot of nutritious fruits and vegetables, dairy products that are being produced that aren't being connected with people in need. So, we've been really focused on what are the improvements that we need to do with
So, we've been really focused on what are the improvements that we need to do with programs or federal policies to help strengthen that connection. You know, oftentimes, it might cost a grower actually more money to donate food than it would to till it under. You know, in Pennsylvania, you have a lot of dairy, so it could cost money to get it pasteurized and bottled and to a food bank if you have excess fluid milk. So, I think federal incentives, either tax incentives or making it easier for additional food to be donated can have a big role to play there.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank the gentleman. Please recognize the gentleman from Kentucky, Mr. Comer, now for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I ask a question, I just wanted to address something that was, was mentioned earlier on the committee about the president's proposed budget cuts, specifically Meals on Wheels. That's something that's very important in my district, representative poor district. I have parts of Appalachia all the way to the river counties on the Mississippi River in a very gerrymandered district that's six hours from east to west in the district. One good thing that happened when that cut was announced was Meals on Wheels got a record amount of private donation overnight. And I think that's because people recognize that's, that's a good program, it's a needed program. But in the future, we're all going to have to tighten our belts in, in Congress. I mean, the debt rapidly approaching $20 trillion, that's not sustainable. It's immoral, what Congress in the past have done to our children and grandchildren. So, having said that, I support the SNAP program. But I'm, I'm wondering, Ms. Krawitzky, are there duplications of services? Are there things that we can do to become, to make this more efficient? And let me add this, I was Kentucky Commissioner of Agriculture. We, one of our divisions was commodity distribution. So, we had a commodity distribution program, and knowing how that was administered, knowing how, who was eligible, who was not eligible, is there a duplication of services? Are there things that we can do to be more efficient when we craft the next farm bill?
Well, as I've said, I believe that our programs are designed to complement and support each other and not overlap or duplicate each other. The programs that we're talking about today, FDPIR, cannot be duplicated with SNAP. You have to choose to either be one program or the other. So, there's, it's a very clear line there. For CSFP and TFAP, they really do support the gaps in, in somebody's ability to get through the month on a SNAP benefit. We know that we see an increase in food stamp lines, frankly, towards the end of the month when they've run out of food. And in CSFP, we know that seniors don't participate at a very high rate, and they are actually more encouraged to, to take a box of food that's grown by American farmers. They're, they're a little bit, we know some of the challenges for seniors participating in SNAP, and one of them is the stigma of receiving a cash benefit. But they feel like they're supporting American agriculture by participating in CSFP and getting domestic food.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Thank the gentleman. The gentleman yields back. Now, please recognize Mrs. Jean Grisham for five minutes of questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the panelists. I, I ran the New Mexico, was then the State Unit on Aging or State Agency, and it became a department. So, I was the Cabinet Secretary of Aging and Long-Term Services for 14 years, so over several different gubernatorial administrations. And I remember being in, in your position and talking to legislators and realizing, as somebody new actually to Aging Services, that while we were receiving funding from a different federal government entity, and through the Older Americans Act, and it does home-delivered meals for seniors, and it does congregate meals, that I quickly realized that both the seniors who were coming in for a congregate meal were often getting that one meal a day. And for the home-delivered meals, they were getting one lunch and no breakfast, no dinner, and no weekend meals. And I proposed that if we were really trying to address hunger, then we should be providing three meals a day. But I don't get funding for three meals a day, so I asked the state legislature to fund that. And I spent year after year after year trying to explain how the number of individuals served was X, but the amount of money we were spending on those meals was Y, was much larger than they anticipated. And so, they actually met these folks, right, who we were for years and years and years not talking about, that we were just under this program, giving them one meal a day. And so, literally, they are starving. And, and, and I think about how we want to make sure that we don't have redundant programs. We don't want there to be any administrative waste. I actually go nuts about that. And that we all recognize that we have to make tough choices, but there's a sense that there are so many easy ways, and that it's all duplicated, and that in fact, we're overfeeding or over-providing. And I, I live in a state, as you mentioned, Ms. Calvert, that since I've been in Congress is either the hungriest state in the nation, or has the hungriest children in the nation, or is second or third, all untenable and all unacceptable. And in fact, today, while I'm in Congress, because we also have the highest unemployment and some of the most difficult challenges of any state in the country, the state dollars that I got appropriated have all, are all gone. So, we're back to the same situation that we resolved to the degree that we could, where people get, if they're lucky, one meal a day, and the next person on the waiting list gets a meal. When that person goes to a nursing home, their family moves them away, or they die, which is terrible. So, I'm really grateful that we are, as a committee as a whole, talking about ways to make sure that food is getting to who we need it to go to. I also appreciate that we're doing lots in private donations, but it's not sustainable. And people want to do food, and you made some very practical points, Ms. Calvert, about sometimes you can't even get food, fresh food. But we don't, we're not getting cash, and we're not getting distribution and storage efforts by grocery stores and by farmers, because they can't, they can't do that. And so, I'm delighted to hear that we have at least one member, one of my colleagues, who's interested in figuring out what we do with 100 million authorized in TFAP, but only 50 million appropriated. So, I've got a bill that's the Food Bank Assistance Act that we're reintroducing again this year that says spend the 100 million, because now you're, you're addressing hunger, because you're getting food to the places that you needed to get, and you're dealing with, I've got a state with many, many tribal nations, 22, you have, you have opportunities to deal in these remote and rural areas. And in addition, I want there to be more food, because without changing the amount appropriated in TFAP for actual food, we're not meeting the need. So, I'm in favor of at least a 57% increase. Set of 338 million ought to be 500, and we really need to be leveraging. And then, we can talk about the impacts we're having at reducing hunger and, and helping folks move. I haven't left anybody anytime, which is typical for me, and I don't mean to, but I would, I get a sense that the whole panel sees the benefit of making sure that we can store and distribute food, and that the bulk of our money is getting to food purchases that are getting into the hands and bellies of the people that we want to make sure don't go hungry. Yes?
I'd agree. Thank you for your past support. Obviously, we're a big supporter of the Food Bank Assistance Act. We think it's a great way to augment what the other federal nutrition programs do in fighting hunger. And I could just say that I'm 100% confident that our food banks can safely receive and distribute any additional allocation that's provided.
I guess everyone's yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The gentlelady's time has expired, and she did get at least one opportunity to hear from a witness.
You're getting better.
You are getting better, absolutely, and I appreciate it. Please recognize the gentleman from New York, Mr. Fosso, now for five minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I hadn't thought to ask this question, but I noted in terms of Ms. Calvert's organization that you have over 200 food banks in your organization and, and many other local organizations or affiliates. And one of the more satisfying things I did as a private attorney a few years ago, obviously before I got elected to Congress, was to set up a 501(c)(3) for a local food bank in my area. And it just occurred to me, wondered, how, are most of your 200 food banks incorporated as 501(c)(3)'s?
Right. So, thank you for your question. Feeding America is the, the national network. We are a 501(c)(3) association. Our member food banks are also 501(c)(3)'s. They have a contractual relationship with us as part of our network, but they're also all their own individual 501(c)(3) organizations.
Good. Okay. And Ms. Krawitzky, I'm particularly interested in the commodity program that you mentioned in your testimony in terms of your dealings with the states and the distribution. It mentions that you have enough money for approximately, just under 700,000 participants annually. How much is, was appropriated for the program in the last fiscal year?
So, the last fiscal year, we were provided a total of 222 million. 45 million of that was for administrative costs, and 176 million of that was for food purchases. In, in the ongoing CR, there was an anomaly that provided some additional funding for 2017, so our total funding stream is now up to about 236.
And, and that 45 million that you mentioned for administration, is that at both the federal and state level?
No, that goes directly to our state agencies who turn around and pass it down to the local area agencies.
I see. And are those, are you satisfied that that level of administrative spending is appropriate?
I, I think I would turn to Mr. Kubik for that answer, but I would say that it has been a stable, stabilized over many, many years, that it's not an amount that has grown over the past 10 years.
And is the, the 700, almost 700,000 participants that you mentioned in your testimony, what do you think the actual need would be out there?
So
Compared to the 700 who are receiving it?
The, the, the issue about CSFP is it's neither statewide or nationwide. And so, while we are serving about 700,000 participants, we know that many of our states, we have 48 states participating right now, many of our states, if they felt funding was available, would be putting in additional requests for additional caseloads. We have been fortunate in that the funding has allowed us to add. We're at, that number of 700,000 is up from about 588, just a number, just a couple of years ago. So, we are seeing, we are able to meet some demands for new states participating. Over the last two years, over nine states have come into the program, and they're just getting the program started. We would anticipate those states would need additional caseload as they grow their infrastructure.
Yes, it struck me that the 700,000 was actually fairly low across the nation. And could you provide the committee, for the record, some information on the state-by-state participation and areas where they are fulfilling the need and other areas where perhaps there are gaps? Because I certainly would like to know that for New York State, and I know there is a significant need out there, and I would appreciate if you could provide that to the committee.
Be happy to.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I yield back.
The gentleman yields back. And now, please recognize Mr. Lawson for five minutes of questioning.
Thank you very much. And first, I would like to compliment you all in the area that you work in. It's so vital, important to people's lives and the state's life. Three weeks ago, I had the opportunity to do two things with USDA. One was a visit to middle school where 100% of the students was on free and reduced lunch, and that was an incredible experience, even though it was right in my back door. And then, to go to Second Harvest Food Bank, where I could see the operation that was going on there. In fact, it was the first time I ever been in a zero-degree freezer. You know, it didn't take long to get out, but, but, and most of the people there were volunteers. There was volunteers that had careers that were coming in to work with people there. So, I know the importance of, and so, what I really want to do is piggyback on the question, not the question that I wanted to ask, but the question of the gentlelady from Mexico, and that is, what is the wish list of, that you all did not get a chance to respond to in terms of funding, and what would it do to alleviate hunger in this country? And I guess we can just go down the line. She spoke, but she did not get a chance for all of you all to respond. And this coming budget, what would be the wish list that you need in terms of providing resources for people?
In the coming budget or the coming farm bill? Well, just very quickly, you know, I think we've all really talked about the strength of the federal commodity programs. There's a lot that could be done to make those much stronger. 700,000 seniors served on CSFP, yet we're serving 7 million seniors that are food insecure. There's an argument for expansion and greater funding right there. As you saw at the Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida, they do a great job and distribute a lot of food, but, you know, there's a lot that additional TFAP would provide them. And, you know, there's a lot of opportunities to strengthen the SNAP program, which is, although not the subject of the hearing today, is a source of significant support for millions of food insecure Americans.
I'd start with my wish list would be an end to hunger in this country. That would be my first wish. But in terms of the seniors that we represent, I think I'd like to see those seniors who need CSFP to have access to it. As we've heard, it is a smaller program in, in the FNS budget with the 700,000 caseload. We know that there's more of a need within our country for that. There's two more states we'd like to see come on board. The last two would be Alabama and Wyoming to join our community. But we'd like to see the program available to those who need the program. And if there's some regulatory change, we've thought about, perhaps Medicare, the Medicare portion is considered income that comes out of a social security check. We'd like to see maybe that being addressed to remove it as a portion of income, because some seniors don't qualify for CSFP, and that Medicare portion is putting them over it without the Medicare portion, which isn't really actual dollars in their, in their account they would qualify. And we know from seniors, the story I told of Frederick, he was 82 years old when he signed up for CSFP. They only apply for it when they need it. Thank you.
My, my first thing on the wish list would be a carryforward provision on, on our budgets. Too many times, at the end of the year, you've got plans on doing something with your budgeted funds. However, a snafu, snafu may occur that you can't spend that money, and if you don't get it spent by the end of the fiscal year, it has to go back to the government. If we had a carryforward provision, I could go forward with the planned projects that we had for the program without having to return those funds and then turn around the following year and ask for them again, and not know if I'll get them, because we don't know what the budgets will be for the following year. Thank you.
While I can't share my personal wish list with you, I do want to point out that the TFAP mandatory formula embedded in the farm bill can actually result in a decrease of food funding as well as an increase of food funding. It actually depends on the state of the economy. And so, the last farm bill recognized the, the additional need for TFAP with, on top of the mandatory formula, adding additional amounts appropriated over the next five years, which is getting ready to expire. So, in the absence of action, there is a possibility that our current law right now on the funding formula would cause the amount of funding to go down.
I thank the gentleman. Now, please recognize the gentlelady from North Carolina, Mrs. Adams, for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to thank all of our witnesses for being here today. The Emergency Food Assistance Program is very important for food banks and soup kitchens that help feed our most vulnerable populations in the 12th District of North Carolina that I represent. Funding for storage and distribution costs are needed to help food banks store food items until they can be distributed to partner feeding organizations and families in need of assistance. Ms. Calvert, there are several members at this hearing that would like for storage and distribution funds within the Emergency Food Assistance Program to be fully funded at their authorized level of 100 million dollars. How would fully funding storage and distribution funds enhance Feeding America's capacity to provide food assistance?
Thank you for your question. We certainly would support that as well. And I think, you know, having had the pleasure of working with the food banks that serve your district and talking with them about many of the unmet needs, I know that part of that funding they would use to partner with the ag industry, so that when there's surplus food, they're able to reimburse the grower for the cost to get the food to the food bank. That's a big deal. You know, North Carolina grows a lot of fruits and vegetables. You know, North Carolina grows a lot of fruits and vegetables, and it makes no sense that we can't help a lot of these small agencies connect nutritious food with people in need. They do a lot of mobile pantries and a lot of work in schools. So, I know that that's really important to your food bank members and many of our other food banks, to increase the programs that we're able to provide in schools to help children that are food insecure.
Thank you. Ms. Krawitzky, one thing this committee has examined over the past two years is the need for improved coordination at the state and federal levels with the administration of programs. Is there anything that we can do to assist you in making sure that funding for all the distribution programs, including the school meal programs, are working together?
So, what I would say is that we do have referral requirements in most of our programs. So, when somebody walks in seeking assistance in CSFP, there's very likely to be additional information of connecting those seniors to other services around the state. In food banks around the country, that same aspect exists in that I think that our partners do a really great job of trying to connect people in need with the other programs. Our school lunch program is used to actually help confer eligibility to some of our other nutrition assistance programs. So, if you participate in the school lunch program, for many of the food banks, they operate a backpack program, and by virtue of being a recipient of a free and reduced price meal, you're going to also receive a backpack to go home over the weekend. I think there's a, we do a fairly good job of connecting the dots, but I'm very happy to discuss at a later date other ways that I think we could be more effective.
Thank you. Ms. Calvert, many nutrition advocates are concerned that the end of waivers to work requirements for able-bodied adults in the SNAP program will put more pressure on food banks. As waivers from SNAP work requirements continue to expire, are you seeing more demand for your services at partner agencies?
We are. And actually, I wanted to highlight a study that was done in Maine by our food banks there. You know, the state decided to make some changes and to remove work waivers. And so, they surveyed the people that they were serving, and they found that 25% of those surveys who'd lost SNAP benefits said it was due to a time limit. 80% of those individuals reported that they're using the food pantry more this year than in the past. You know, many others actually shouldn't have been kicked off the program. In Maine, 13% of those that lost their SNAP benefits due to the time limit actually had health and caregiving barriers that should have made them exempt from that. So, I would just highlight that there's going to be a significant, you know, if changes were made to work waivers for able-bodied adults without dependents, there's a significant amount of implementation challenges that would come with that. You know, 13% losing benefits when they shouldn't have in this population that already is not eligible for other benefits, that's kind of unconscionable that that happened. And we worry that that's just the tip of the iceberg if work waivers are done away with.
Thank you very much.
I thank the gentlelady. I want to take this time to really thank all the members of the panel for your travels, for your expertise, for your passion. Certainly, a passion that I share and members of the subcommittee share of making sure that we're providing the right type of assistance to meet the nutritional needs of individuals. It is a team effort, there's no doubt about it. It's about personal resources and family support and community programs and SNAP and our TFAP and commodities program and what we do in our tribal lands, all part of the, all part of the formula of not, as I like to say, not leaning left or right, but standing squarely behind American citizens and their nutritional needs. And I want to thank my colleagues for being here. We had a great turnout. As you've noticed, members come and go. That's just kind of part of the, just part of the wear and tear and the responsibilities here. But we saw the interest. We had almost close to 100% participation today by committee members. And finally, I just want to thank the staff. It's your hard work that keep us on track and help us to put together such a great hearing. So, under the rules of the committee, the record of today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days. To receive additional material and supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any question posed by a member, this hearing of the Subcommittee on Nutrition is adjourned.